Disposition of minutes for the regular session held June 6th, 2011. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting a regular session minutes from June 6th?
Aye.
Thank you. Communications, we have communications from two members of council, first member Coon.
Thank you. I move to accept the auditor's May report.
Do we have a second? Second? All those in favor of accepting the auditor's report for May?
Aye.
Thank you. And member Gosny has some communications.
I do. And this is regarding the Community Center solar installation. One of the costs of being first in something, and this was one of the first projects of its kind in the state, is that there are sometimes some changes in things. This is not a bad change, but the contract that we have with them sets out an equation for calculating our utility rate from them. And it includes, it's complicated, and I'll, I can go into the details for anyone that needs it at some point, but there are two parts to the utility bill from AEP, and it's a demand charge based on our peak usage and also a per kilowatt hour charge. The current equation uses that combined rate to calculate what we would owe for the actual solar energy that's produced by the installation there. And Solar Vision met with the mayor's office and them last week and looked at changing that equation so that it's more predictable because the demand can change depending on the weather, depending on a lot of factors. And so, we've come up with something that will save the city money still. It would be an equation that would be, set a floor of five cents per kilowatt hour for the electricity from Solar Vision, and then, once the price from AEP just for the energy charge regardless of the demand, once the pure energy charge reaches a certain point, they will discount our price at eighty-five percent of what we would pay AEP for the same number of kilowatt hours. And so, it's a discount off what we would be paying AEP, but the actual equation that they use to calculate what we owe them would change from what's in the current contract. And that's a draft, we don't have the actual language yet, and of course, it'll go through our law director's office once we have that, but I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that that's being discussed now.
Any idea when that might happen?
I know they want to get it done sooner than later themselves, so I had to assume that sometime within the next month. Again, part of this demand charge is actually trying to break that down to what we're getting charged per month in demand, not the generation, not the transmission, but the demand part of it. So, we would go back and forth each time, and it's, as I say, it would flux month to month.
Yeah, so the way it is now would not be very predictable, and then at the end of the year, we would try to, they would rebate us any charges over what we would have paid AEP, but the new proposal would have a set price, and so we would know exactly what it is, as would they, and so it would bring stability to our utility bill there for that portion of the power.
Any other questions, member Gosny? Okay, so we'll look for that, come through the law director's office to us eventually?
Right, and I'm not sure that council actually has to approve the contract, but we'll see the language for sure before it's final.
Okay, reports and communications from other elected officials, Mayor Wyom.
Just a few announcements of meetings coming up. Of course, we have this gas line replacement meeting that's occurring the 22nd of June, that's this Wednesday, six to seven up in the community center. I myself will not be able to attend because we have the solid waste district policy committee meeting at the same time up in Nelsonville. This is to look at our solid waste program within the Athens-Hawking Waste District. And that's at the same time at the inn at Hawking College. I believe Nancy is representative as well, and she'll be there.
Of the public.
Of the public, yes. I just represent the largest waste generator in the county counties.
Recycle also, right?
Recycle too, yes. Let's see, the other one, of course, there's going to be a press conference tomorrow at 10:30 for Operation Clean Sweep. This is to get, to kick up the litter picking up and cleaning of the city, trying to get it litter free as we go along into the summer with the idea we'll end up with a higher standard come September, we hope. And then the town hall meeting, of course, is June 28th, and that's six to seven as well, I believe, 6:30. I've been looking at the stuff so much, yeah, 6:30, and that's at the community center as well. So, we have a series of meetings coming up, and that's all I really have.
Okay, thank you. Auditor Heck?
No report.
Law director, Mike?
No report.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to, we have one ordinance for third reading. Ordinance 5811, an ordinance declaring the fire ladder truck no longer needed for municipal purpose. Introduced by councilmember Nysley, who isn't here, so councilmember Butler will be handling this.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 05811.
Second.
Thank you. I'm getting over a little bit of a sore throat, so bear with me through some of these. Quite simply, this is an effort for the city since we anticipate to receive a new ladder truck as early as November 2011 for us to, the city service safety director to dispose of the old one. And move on. Thank you.
All those in favor of ordinance 5811?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Ordinance 5811 is passed, five to zero. Now we have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 6311, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 13, General Offenses, Chapter 13.04, Offenses Against Public Peace, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise. Introduced by councilmember Coon.
Thank you. Pardon me. This ordinance amends only the penalty section of the noise ordinance. The first offense will no longer be a criminal offense. It says, "A first violation of this section shall be an administrative offense, requiring a fine of $100. Any person sided with a first offense of this section who does not pay the required administrative fine within thirty days shall receive a minor misdemeanor citation into court, providing notice and an opportunity to be heard which will serve as an appeals process. A second offense within six months of the first offense shall be a minor misdemeanor, and any offender who persists in such violation after reasonable warning or request to desist by a member of the Athens City Police Department shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of the fourth degree. Any subsequent offense within six months of the second offense shall be punishable as a misdemeanor of the fourth degree." And then, this is not a change, but it says, "In addition, any offender previously convicted of a violation of this section shall use temporary legal noise baffles to keep the noise level within the legal limits imposed above."
Okay, any questions or comments about the proposed changes to this ordinance? Mayor?
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, and I think it was good to see that there was widespread support to, I don't want to say decriminalize, but to make the first offense, keep the first offense from having someone go to jail or get a record. And I think that's definitely an improvement. As I mentioned before, I would personally favor a written warning as a first offense as was proposed. It was an idea that came through someone from the student senate group and was, has been something that the police chief said he would be able to implement as well as, my impression was that he thought it was a decent idea. So, that's something that I would, I certainly support, and I think it would be good to have in here, but I understand that with this council, it's probably not going to happen. But it's something that I think would make the ordinance, I think it's something that would improve the ordinance and the enforcement of it.
That could be revisited at some future, at some future time. This is just an attempt to keep it simple for right now.
This was, as I understood it, this was the chief's language, really?
Yes, right. Yes, his recommendation. All right.
And I think that the other thing that I would say I would have certainly done much sooner, it would have been to change that, to change the penalty to an administrative offense, had I known that the expungement only is allowed for one offense. So, if you'd have another offense, you wouldn't be able to expunge one of the two. And once that information became available, then it was clear we had to do this. I mean, it was never a question. As for the other, maybe this new mythical council will help you, Allah who knows.
Actually, regarding the expungement, I received a letter from Jim Silroy, who was aware of the concern of council regarding expungement, and he said, "Really, that concern is sort of misplaced." And I'm wondering if perhaps the law director could explain that a little bit?
I don't understand why it would be misplaced. I'm certainly willing to look into that, this is the first I've heard of it.
Well, he said that you could, that you actually could, that you can expunge more than one thing that...
Sure, let me take a look at that and get back to you before the next meeting on it. I don't want to just answer off the cuff and give you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Member Butler?
Thank you. Again, my concerns about, well, I do agree with the comments by member Gosny in trying to decriminalize this, and member Bain referenced that as well, too. But I still believe that the fine would behoove the city and our efforts and energy we put into noise to increase the penalty with the fine amount, similar to what I brought up that has, that we witnessed in the community of Burlington, Vermont. So, that would be something that I would still support, would be making the fine a larger amount.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Wyom?
A lot of it's been said already. The scientist in there says, "Let's change one variable at a time, keep it simple." So, I think this is a good start on that. In terms of the fine, the dialogue I had with Chief Pyle was, if it was too high for the first offense or second offense, invariably it would go to court because that would be cheaper than for them to fight that than to actually just write the check at one point. So, the question is, how often do we want that to be detested in court? The other thing, of course, is that I, having worked, done community service with many students who had noise violations when I was at the president of Westside Community Association, many times they really weren't sharing the cost. Invariably, it was one person who, the first person who's usually the most sober who answered the door, who lived there. The anecdotal stories of how they just happened to be the first one at the door who represented the apartment or the house was very sad to hear sometimes because some of them got no support whatsoever. Other ones would share some of the cost, they usually caught costs in community service one side or the other. I actually had it where one kid who was actually picking his step up, we ended up in front of the house he lived in, and he just came out, took pictures of him, and laughed at him, and went back in the house, which I told him he should find new roommates at that point. So, you know, when you talk about the amount of money, it's such a variable on who actually ends up penalized for this, for this violation. A hundred dollars is not true, but somebody who happens to be there, as I say, it's usually the sober, most sober person answering the door, whether it's by, you know, reaction time or just designated door answerer, you know, unfortunately, so.
Coming for us.
I would say, one variable at a time from my point of view at this point. Again, I don't think it's going to change that much, how it acts and how it plays out.
Well, I guess naively, maybe I was hoping that a larger fine might be more of a deterrent, but, and so...
Well, the second time we'll put them into more, well, you know, again, court costs are running about $120, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. I forget exactly the fines. Usually when I was doing it for the Westside Community Association, it was usually $120 as well, or, and sometimes I think Judge Bennett would waive the fine if they did for a house community service. I think Judge Grimm normally does not, but I'm not sure. I really haven't done it since I was president.
Thank you.
Just hang on to your chairs.
Mayor, do you read this as saying that only the first person who answers the door gets fined, or everybody in the house gets fined?
I read this as a violation is given to the house, but it's the person who usually, they write the ticket to somebody they have an ID for. I mean, there's one, somebody told me that the girl went to the door, she didn't have her ID, she turns around to the person and says, "Do you have your ID?", and then hands it over and gives the person behind her ID to the police officer. I mean, this, these are the tales of lore I heard, so to me, it sounds like the first person, it may be the household, but it's usually somebody who's, you know, in that household, responsible. They don't say, "We're going to give you three," do a head count, how many people in the house actually live there, and then start passing out multiple tickets.
Any comments from the audience? Not tonight? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 6411, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to purchase a police cruiser. Introduced by councilmember Coon, I'm sorry.
Thank you. As we talked about in committee last week, the police department has the funds in their budget to purchase a police cruiser. It's my understanding that only one cruiser has been replaced since 2008. And the first section says, "The safety, the service safety director is hereby authorized to advertise, accept bids, and enter into contracts where necessary for the purchase of a police cruiser and ancillary equipment. Section two, the service safety director is hereby authorized to expend up to $37,000 from capital improvements fund 580.207 TC 500 for said vehicle."
Okay, ordinance 6511, an ordinance declaring a police cruiser no longer needed for municipal purposes. Introduced by councilmember Coon, probably related to this.
Thank you again. This would be related to the ordinance that we just read. This is a, let me see, a 2000 Ford Expedition, I believe it has 92,000 miles on it, and has been a good vehicle, but it's going to be replaced and it's time for it to go. And so, the service safety director is hereby authorized to dispose of said vehicle by donation to other governmental agencies or nonprofit 301(c) organizations, city auction, eBay auction, or sealed bids.
Questions, comments?
This...
Yes, Mayor?
This is a four-wheel drive vehicle. There's discussion whether we'll replace this or not for the replacement cruiser. There is, there are actually two interested parties in actually getting this donated, so we'll probably end up doing a donation for it, and there's kind of a line there, but it'll help us out in one sense to donate this.
Okay. Ordinance 6611, an ordinance authorizing the cleaning and repair of water wells. Introduced by councilmember Bain.
Mr. President, typically we've done this, this and purchasing reagents for the water treatment plant, and somehow, we are doing it now in order to get it done this year. We'll probably, we'll have it done in time to do it later in the summer. We don't have an, it'll be okay. Let's see. The one thing I noticed is the price is up a lot, but I think it's probably just the way it is.
Ordinance 6711, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $850,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the costs of improvements to the municipality's wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency. Again, introduced by member Bain.
Well, Mr. President, this is an ordinance going out for borrowing of money we need in order to do the engineering for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. And that will be done probably over the next year, and then there'll be another year, potentially at least if history's any guide, EPA approval, and the actual construction probably and borrowing potentially from OWDA, maybe as long as two years down the road. And that's been verified by several people, so it's quite a distance down. And next week, we will be asking for, I will be going over a rate increase that will accompany this, and the questions that we're, we've been grappling with will be out there. I believe this was done by our bond council, but our intention is to, and we've already met with, I haven't met with, but other people have met with, OWDA, which is always a good source of funds for wastewater treatment plant upgrade. It's a lot more money than it was the first time when we met the Clean Water Act the first time in 1988, as everything has increased at this point in time. And the good thing is, we are, as of the 1st of July, I think we've paid off the initial borrow that we did for $5 million from OWDA just now. We're going to make our final payment, just in time to reprogram that money into this. But we've got two years probably of lifetime, and so, somebody else will be doing that later on.
Mayor Wyom?
And remember, we had a community meeting a month ago, a month and a half ago, where Andy Stone, the public works director, presented the upgrades, which pretty much fell somewhere in the $12 million range, I think it was. And that's what we're looking at. This is, represents the engineering to get to that point where we start building, constructing our new wastewater treatment plant, replacing old components, the wet side, I think is what he calls it, clarifiers, settling tanks. And again, this will take at least two or three years to unfold at this rate. Again, it's a chunk of money, but it, our system's kind of old and needs upgrading, and we need to directly invest in it.
Yeah, and it's going to. Oh, I hope I don't get struck dead for saying this, maybe eliminate the odor, which I've said so many times, and it's never happened.
Actually, that's a goal of Director Stone's with this work.
Yes, because there won't be any quarters, any corners for the yucky material, nasty smelling material to get caught in.
And with the loaning of, borrowing of that much money, what Nancy was talking about is increasing, you are in charge of the sewer rate increases, the administration does the water rate increases. What would be preferable is to actually build in that round of increases for several years running.
We're going to go for five, I think.
Five years, okay.
And then you revisit.
Okay. The scenarios played out right now, if we had no increase and we did the borrowing, we'd pretty much be in the negatives by 2018, I think you're saying? That's provide we didn't do any increases.
That sounds a lot like Medicare, because it's just not going to go that way because council can't let it, so.
Oh, no, council can't let it, but the fact is, you can't stop halfway down the road, too, and say, "We're going to not do increases." So, the idea is to program at least, as you say, five years in.
Well, five years are a good, yeah, a good one. That's a...
That's more like a committee discussion, I know.
Yeah, I know, and that's coming up next week, to a meeting near you.
I think we're looking at beginning the borrow, beginning the increases very soon.
In order to build up enough to possibly pay off the note before it's, which is something we've done before, Jim, but you guys have to decide.
Okay. Ordinance 6811, an ordinance approving the final plat of the East Union Street Apartments' planned unit development. Introduced by councilmember Fall, who is out of the country. Member Bain?
Yes. We have a public hearing scheduled for the 11th of July. The process of this particular planned unit development will be second reading on the 5th of July, and the third reading either on the 11th, when the public hearing happens, or the last meeting in July, the second meeting in July. Last week, Chris Fall waxed eloquent about infilling and all of the wonders associated with that. This particular development follows the pattern she was talking about, and I hope that by the time we get to the public hearing or the next time, if there's any question you have, we asked quite a few questions last time, even in the absence of very recent view of the plat for this. The one thing that I guess you would say is that it's, the only thing that I, this sort of made me, it was applied for earlier, so it didn't have to meet the lot coverage standards we've just implemented, which means it's just like everything else in that neighborhood, so, there it is. Anyway, we have, as you can see, a variance is required because the tract of land is less than two acres. And that's basically the only thing, other than that, planned unit developments are supposed to allow the planner, the administration to bend the rules a little bit in order to get what they want. And I trust that's what this is.
Mayor?
No.
I think, no.
Okay. Again, it's planned unit development, we're talking about 84 beds, 91 park spaces, the lot coverage is running, actually, building coverage is like 25.6%, it says here. Total coverage is 75.7. Again, we're running at 60, this came in before that new legislation. So, again, it looks like it'll work. That's why it came through and passed for the planning commission. I don't know if there's anything more to...
When I talked to the planner, one reason that he was backing the planning and development idea was it gave a better picture for the utilities to be dealt with, especially water and sewer.
I didn't know that.
That was a large reason for going that way, in his point of view. We'll move on to ordinance 6911, an ordinance amending ordinance 010710, and authorizing construction of Phase 1 of the Northwest Bike Path Extension from the West State Street Park and across the Hawking River, project number 255. Member Nysley is going to be represented by member Butler.
Thank you, again, Mr. President. This is an effort to enhance our parks and recreation system, specifically the bike trail. 60% of this total cost of the project will be reimbursed through an ODNR Recreation Trails Program Grant, RTP grant. I think we tweaked the amount on this that will be authorized for the city service safety director to spend, up to $131,000, $131,000 from Recreation Fund 270, Transaction Class 500. There are some photos here as well of the proposal, and a note from Jessica Dean, who's the project and development manager, working with Andy Stone and his department. And the comment on this was that there is an effort as well to work with ODOT to apply for a grant to construct a safe crossing for cyclists at the intersection of 682 there. I don't know if the maps, do you guys want me to try to show them to the camera, or no, what's your thoughts?
Can you zoom in on it?
How about doesn't show the proposed pathways, though?
Yeah, maybe not close enough. Maybe we can post these on the website as well, or look to make links to them from the website. Eventually, we're hoping to have a SPUR connect to University Estates, and another SPUR connecting with a continuation of this would hook up with the Moonville rail trail, which will be a crushed limestone surface. Thank you.
Questions, comments at this point?
Good.
No? Finally, ordinance 7011, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into contract for construction of the Safe Routes to School Stair Project, number 256. Member Butler?
Thank you again. This is a continued effort to work with this particular grant, the Safe Routes to School, and we've been very fortunate over the past couple of years, and this, again, is a combined effort of community members as well as the city mayor's department under the public works director. Specifically here, the city service safety director is authorized to advertise... Specifically here, the City Service Safety Director is authorized to advertise and accept bids where necessary, to enter into a contract for the construction engineering, up to $150,000 for this particular project. Thanks.
Mayor?
Again, this is the second round of Safe Routes to School. The first one, of course, put the crosslights, flashing lights that are across walks near the schools, the sidewalk of Verona, the speed table on Wallace and Morris. This one is going to give us two stairways, one going from Fort to the, behind the armory, so you get better pedestrian traffic down the hill there, or down the cliff, I guess. The other one is by West Elementary, that's behind the back end of West Elementary, to the apartment complex behind that. There is a path there. If you've ever tried it, it's made for the tweens, I guess, or whatever you want to call it, because it's pretty slippery, and it's almost like a series of trees that you kind of hang on and work your way down the hill. The intention, of course, is to make a safer route to get to in front. If you haven't tried it, you should, just don't break leg, okay?
And in efforts built, that one's going to be maintained by the, by the school.
Yes, I believe so, yes. So what we have is we'll have two stairways that are going to be put in place. Of course, we're trying for the third round that's coming up as well.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to announcements and other businesses, Member Bain?
Mr. President, I'd like to have a couple of meetings next time. We'd like to discuss finance and personnel, health insurance, and upgrades therein. Under planning and development, the planner didn't tell me his plans for East Union, but he did say he'd like three new definitions added to the floodplain ordinance, which we will do. And I'd also like to see the AEP trimming grant, and that would be running into David Ingram and suggesting that we need to get moving on that.
Actually, the right-of-way, giving them the right-of-way to cut all the things in the, you know, right-of-way.
I hope it's not that, anyway. And then, another thing will be the Energy Efficiency Wastewater Treatment Plant, and then, at this point, I'd like to move to have that first with the City Services Committee, and then have a special session after that, if two more, more people will go along with me.
I'd go along.
Anybody else? Nobody?
Wait, I'm sorry.
I just, the Energy Efficiency Grant, we're, we need to get it moving.
Okay.
Okay, we've got three. D'Goo and Bo three. Anybody else wants to add it? Feel free.
Okay.
I'll be the only one here, maybe.
I'll just make a brief announcement. I'm not quite sure if I'm ready for primetime with committee meeting, but there is an effort to begin to collect data and work on some anti-hydraulic fracking legislation. So I do want the public to be aware that it's something we're looking at. I've been in contact with some legislators in the city of Pittsburgh, where they were successful in passing unanimous vote for anti-fracking legislation within the city limits. So it is something that we're looking into here, and I just want to make sure I get my ducks in a row before we bring it to discussion.
And one thing we probably want to do is eliminate using the wastewater. I think it might be in the Ohio law, maybe in between now and then, we can figure out if they're allowed to dispose of it in wastewater treatment plants. I know that should have been prohibited in Pittsburgh. I think it has been now.
I don't think it's allowed.
I don't think it's allowed?
No.
No, they just let the saltwater from our backflow go into it, but I think...
This is a different...
No, I understand. So, I was just being smart.
I believe there's also, there was a word of a meeting starting up in Nelsonville, I think, at Hocking College for Gas and Oil Drilling. It gets to 26th of this month, but I don't have the time. And I know that there's a group in Annesville that's looking at gas drilling as well. I think, again, this is grassroots outside the city, but...
Well, I think that we were all saying, "Well, it's not going to happen here," but then Farm Bureau Federation was out in Lee Township, talking about how to do a contract, and I think when they say that, when they do that, that suggests that it may be coming soon, you know? So I think it's good that Kent's jumping on it.
Well, and we have a lot of people to thank as well, too, for making it, for acknowledging the importance of our water, starting with you all that have been here longer, and member, former member Kathy Hack, when she was on council with our drinking well water here and protecting it. So there's a lot of people who support this and are aware of the necessity to protect our water.
Yes, amen. So far, we have finance and personnel committees meeting, and city services. We have other meetings we need...
And what is he going to be doing?
Finance, personnel, planning, development, I thought.
Yeah.
Oh, first, city services, right?
Mm-hmm. Then a special session.
Okay, so...
And environment committee, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm not quite sure if I'm ready for committee yet. I might check in with Debbie Midwick, or, thank you.
So, planning and development. We got the two, right? The two things. AEP, the trimming.
That goes, okay. Okay. So we got three committee meetings and a special session for next week. Right now, we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items that were not covered on the agenda. Anything else that three citizens want to bring up? Okay? Hearing none, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at 8:07.